The meeting schedule, we did get all your emails on that. Like, what is going on here?
Yeah, I discovered after I invited you guys to all of them, the only way to get it on the room calendar is do it one at a time. So it bombarded you all.
Only. Person recurring.
All right, and it's 4:30. I think we'll get started. Looks like we have enough people. Brian, you want to do a roll call?
Commissioner Lyons.
Here.
Commissioner Nemec.
Here.
Commissioner Rock.
Here.
Commissioner Moss.
Here.
Commissioner Penzer is absent. Commissioner Milfeath is absent. Commissioner Brown appears to be.
Okay, well, we do have a quorum, so we can move forward. First item on the agenda, we'll review and approve the November 1st minutes. We had a chance to look at those. Any questions, changes, adjustments?
I did read them. Am I okay to vote on them? Or, okay, just making sure.
I make a motion that we approve the November 1st minutes if there's no changes.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries. Minutes are approved. All right, we do not have any preliminary development plans for this meeting, so we'll move to the consent agenda. If there's any items on the consent agenda that you have questions on and want pulled off, please let me know. Otherwise, I would be open for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None? All right, the consent agenda has been approved. All right, going on to old business. Looks like the property on Simmons Street is asked to be continued until, I believe, the January meeting, correct? Okay, I do believe we will need a motion to continue that item to the January meeting, January 10th.
Well, I can do that. I make a motion to approve it.
Make a motion to continue.
I make a motion to continue the S U B 22-6 until the January meeting.
Also continue CUP 22-6.
I'll go through all of them. Okay, excuse me, CUP 22-6, D R 22-23, S R 22-15.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried and is continued to the January 10th meeting. Moving right along. Wow, we could have been done in four minutes. Okay, now we have new business with the scenic route service station code amendment. This is a work session and information item. This is not a public hearing. I am guessing that Michelle is going to present.
Actually, Brian's going to.
Oh, Brian's presenting first. Oh.
There we go.
All right, Brian, all yours.
Okay, so, Robert, you're the only commissioner left from this time, but way back in 2020, there was a general update of our code that included a prohibition on service stations within the scenic route overlay zone. The intent of that was really to direct future development of service stations away from Third Street, you know, the general scenic routes. Third Street's the main commercial corridor of town, but with wanting to direct bypass traffic around town through the Dine Hard Boyston corridor, which is not a service or a scenic route. That was really where we were intending on. Directing future development of service stations, that portion of that code amendment was recommended for approval by you, by Tinsley. When it got to city council, they approved everything else and then directed staff to work with planning and zoning commission and bring it back at a future date. Two years later, here we are.
After we actually got applications. Bring it back while there's a current application. So this was actually prior to us having any applications. It was just sort of. Yeah, just saying.
You have an application now?
So we don't.
Not right now. Maverick withdrew.
Okay.
So it's better to talk about the policy without a specific application in mind.
What was the council's main concern on the previous code amendment?
So, I mean, from what I remember, it was probably only one council member who thought that there should be service stations within town, like even within the commercial core area. I think by and large, most of them kind of agreed with them. There, I think there was one other council member who said, well, maybe on the outskirts of town on the scenic routes, so in those areas, like along the impact area. And at this point, the Valley County Commissioners has said they're not interested in looking at any code updates until we do the 10-year impact area review. So if this code amendment moves forward, it would just apply to the city limits anyway. And then at some point in the future, we would bring it to the county commissioners to see if they wanted it to apply to their impact area as well. But, I mean, by and large, I would think that if they were, at the time from what I can remember, like if they would have voted, it would have passed. But they were a little bit more like, well, maybe planning and zoning should talk about it more. It was more of that idea of the council was more operating in this sort of consensus mode at that point, as opposed to just calling the question, making the vote. So there was really one outspoken council member who didn't agree with it. I would say by and large, the other ones seemed pretty much supportive. And then there was just some confusion about, well, where would they go? Maybe planning and zoning should kind of hash this out. And so that's why they remanded it. They approved all the other code amendments, but that one, yeah.
One thing, I guess I would like to make sure, and I'm pretty sure I've got it correctly based on it, because if it was approved, pretty much as is, we might make some adjustments, that it becomes, and all the current ones become a non-conforming use.
So.
Is there a separation between a non-conforming use or a grandfathered use?
Not, it become non-conforming use. I have pretty specifically worded the language in this memo to differentiate between the fuel island portion and the convenience store or service station.
Just wondering about that.
Facility, that sort of thing, so that they could grow and expand the non-fuel island portion with the intent of.
Okay, so the store wouldn't, store part of it.
Right.
Would not be considered non-conforming. So if somebody wanted to do, okay.
Yeah, and the other historical feedback, I think, when I was typing up the minutes or reviewing them from that council meeting was that there was wanting to provide the bottom pop individually owned aspect of some of the small businesses that have this model in town. So our effort to protect that is by giving the convenience store a little bit bigger carve-out moving forward into the future. And then just tackling the fuel island part directly.
And also, on the non-conforming, though, if there is a destruction of it, the way I understand it, if it's more than 50%, they can still replace it.
Within a certain time period.
Yeah, within, they can't wait five years or whatever, and so, yeah. So, but even if it's over 50%, they can still replace it, so it doesn't mean it goes away. It was kind of moving on one spot, says no, but then the other one ever threw, and it's like, okay, if it's certain things, they still can.
And that.
But that would also only really apply to the, again, the fuel part of it, based on your wording. So it doesn't, so if the store burned down, it doesn't matter. In that sense.
Yeah.
Okay. See, I was just concerned that some of these have been here longer than all of us, including myself, and wouldn't see it be right. So, oh, sorry, it's non-conforming, made a new rule, you can't put anything there again. But I think it covers that. One other thing I thought, because I know there was discussions on it based on, and I don't know if it would work for them, or they would consider it, or if somebody else would. I notice on the non, or the scenic route part of it, continue it all the way out to basically outskirts of town. And my thoughts would be potentially would that scenic route part of it potentially say, okay, up to Dine Hard, but then it's allowed beyond. Because I know that one, one people were talking about Maverick and raising the land to potentially do one out there, and that, I mean, it's really not scenic route.
Where's the city limit right now?
Idle power, you got the hotels, you got all kinds of stuff right there.
Better, though. But yeah, I think, I think, I mean, the other thing to keep in mind, that scenic routes run 150 feet from edge of right away back. So then beyond that, they could go in those locations.
Hmm.
Yeah, but you're pretty tight on, I mean, there's only a couple that it could realistically go anyway by the time you get to the city limits. And it would be pretty much across from Super 8 and that little strip.
City limits are just south of the airport, those, the airport. Way things.
It's Crone, yeah, Crone, Crone.
Crone, and then it goes around the airport. Actually, that map shows it right there.
Yeah, it's the nose.
That blue line.
So I'm just, my thought would be, would it be reasonable to potentially allow it from Dine Hard to Crone? Even though that is technically in the scenic route. It's because it's, I mean, you got a lumberyard there, you got airport, you got hotels, I don't know. I don't know, just because if we're trying to move it out, out of town. Just one of my thoughts. Really, Bill, thanks.
I like, real concerned with that. I think would be getting, it gets pretty messy if you start adding in other land uses and other carve-outs of this strip of this street and this strip of this street. Yeah.
Yeah, but we're unique enough that almost, I don't.
You almost wouldn't want to associate it with the scenic route. You want to specifically define streets or something, which the problem, I mean, I think the problem you get into then, it's, is it like sort of this arbitrary desertation? Or is it actually linked to like a zone or an overlay, which you have authority to regulate land use? So that's, I think that's what you're kind of talking about, Brian. It gets a little tricky if you start exempting things. I mean, the reality is then you'd want to take those areas out of the scenic route. The reason they're in the scenic route is because those are like ultimately like the gateways and the entryways to town. So over time, with, you know, new landscaping standards, signage standards, building standards, design standards, like those corridors and gateways should start looking better. You know, some of the stuff that, that's existing is, you know, predates any sort of scenic route, kind of.
Oh, yeah, by far. So then I guess back to the same way you wrote in the code, if they had the store within X amount of feet, that's not a problem, but if they would have to do the pumps, 150 feet off the scenic route, then they could, or, yeah, scenic route, then they could still potentially go in that corridor as long as that part's pushed back far enough. The store part's fine. Okay. Well, in that case, I think you probably.
Dine Hard to the city limits then, right?
Well, Crone, but yeah, I mean, if you can still, if you only have to do the fuel islands back 150 feet, then they still, it doesn't necessarily totally prohibit them from doing one. They just have to make sure it's on that end, which keeps it away from what you're seeing in the front. You just see the potential of the store, so, so it's really not limiting them, but it's not 100% saying no, but kind of.
In some ways, it does kind of encourage what we've been trying to encourage, which is like put the C store in the front, but the pumps behind.
Yeah.
That it has, from an aesthetic standpoint, and just it's just a little bit nicer to look at.
Yeah.
Fuel pumps.
And I can. Those undeveloped cars are at least 350.
Yeah, another one kind of angle back there, but yeah, that one.
It's, I mean, it's difficult because, right, you're creating a blanket rule. And so we, I mean, we talked about this for hours, the staff level, we've talked about this one a lot. But like, I think ultimately you have to, I mean, if you want to regulate this type of land use, you've got to put something in place, and it may not address every single concern, but hopefully it addresses most of the concerns. We actually have a high, pretty high density of service stations and fuel pumps for a community our size. It's not to say that other ones couldn't go in. But, I mean, most of those are pre-existing, so we're probably not going to see a lot more of those.
Yeah. Now, when you're you're doing the definition, I'm looking at this other part here with the electric chargers. Would those be included in the fuel pump category, or would they be allowed to be?
Fuel islands is specific to.
To fuel.
Diesel. And then, yeah, I haven't actually gotten this far into the process. I want to discuss with you guys first, but my concept in my head is there'd be a large-scale electric vehicle charging station, which is really, you know, maybe has a canopy of some sort, is going to be a lot of them is like what you see for a Tesla station alongside the freeway. You know, that's going to be one land use, and then small scale, you know, a business puts one in front of their storefront or something like that, you know, just a couple smaller, less noticeable, less impactful.
And this is, at this point, this is an undefined land use. So we've had.
Oh, the electric part?
Yeah, so we've had a lot of people come in and ask us, what reflects the process for a charging station? And we really haven't had anything specific, so this is good because, right, with new technology, you have to put in further definitions and regulations.
So with some of this, you're going to still write out more detail, then it'll bring back to us again? Again, this works out, okay.
Right. And you're saying the charging stations would be, could be in front of the building or beside the building or?
Charging stations, we would treat differently than fuel, gasoline, diesel, fuel stations.
Why?
Yeah, they're going to be there longer than the actual gasoline. I think it takes longer to.
Precisely, Commissioner Moss. So I'm kind of your EV nerd in this room, because I did a big long thing with the solar nerds for a while. And so mostly, we know at this point that the highest level 20-minute charging stations are going to cost about $1 million for a four-unit station in this area, based on the infrastructure requirements. So we're looking more at seeing level two charging stations, which usually take about an hour to charge a vehicle. So when you think of these EV parking spaces, you really need to train your brain that this isn't like a five-minute in-and-out parking space. It's a glorified long-term parking space where people are going to get out, wander around, hopefully in the central business district, spend their money, eat some food, be entertained, look at the lake, and then walk back to their car before they leave. So it's really more of a parking space than it is a fueling station. So it's still going to have to be, for example, on the scenic route behind or to the side of any business affiliated with, if it is affiliated with a business, where it needs to be landscaped the same way that a parking lot, a standalone parking lot might need to be if it's along the scenic route or has a certain amount of pavement and asphalt. But what it's not going to have is the consistent in-and-out traffic unless somebody decides to invest $1 million in high-speed charging in McCall, which would be wild. But even then, it would be a 20-minute visit. So from what I've seen, looking at scholarly articles about EV charging oases, there is anything from them putting in like day-pass gyms or movie theaters or weird two-to-three-hour amenities for people to charge their vehicles along major travel routes, which this still is one. But our goal would be to not get them to go to the movie theater while their vehicle charges, but rather go to the wonderful town of McCall that we have that surrounds them within walking distance. So, yeah, that's the hypothetical direction that'll end up going. It's a parking spot with electricity.
I read somewhere where they actually, because of the power usage, these charging stations are going to demand that you, in places at larger cities, they have areas where they can actually slow down the amount of charge, so instead of taking 20 minutes for a fast charge, it takes an hour and a half.
I don't know.
Yeah.
They want them to stay there long.
Yeah, I think that that was probably what the direction was, a part of that. And they said that even to, from the standpoint of doing that, they could also take the battery, the usage in the battery out of the battery that's in the car if they decide to do it that way.
I wonder if that's related to the power supply, like.
I think it is, yeah. That was, that was the most controversial thing that I'd, that I'd seen, ever seen about.
Stuck in the power from all the businesses around. I'd start flickering.
You get gas and you don't get gas, it takes, they take gas away from you.
I don't think we'd want to, they, okay, you have to have a long-term charger. I think that would be pretty tough to try to force, okay, you're stuck here for an hour, go spend money.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I don't think.
I think it's mostly following the market knowledge that those $1 million are not going to be spent easily on many people, at least.
Not anytime soon on that, no.
So, so that I understand, because earlier we're talking about envisioning larger-scale electric vehicle charging stations as opposed to one or two here and there.
Oh, no, that'd just be if it were like a, a land use that a private property owner pursued. They said, I want to develop a large-scale EV charging facility as my land use.
That would be something that we would treat differently. Hey, I want to put one over here.
And both of those items would be treated differently than a gas station, but we don't know how they would be treated yet.
So, yeah, is that going to be a commercial use, or what? We're going to go through the list and add that? Is it permitted, conditional use permitted, or?
Yeah, I mean, I'll go.
In zones?
Charts and add it to everything.
So likely a small scale is administrative, large scale is like a conditional use.
Yeah, in most places.
And then there would be maybe some development, like definition of what is small scale, what is large scale, like number of vehicles, and then.
And then same.
Development standard.
Same thing as far as what? Same thing as far as what zoning is allowed in and not allowed in or conditional use still allowed in.
Yeah, I think we were talking about adding it to the, the use chart.
Yeah, I, I don't really like it when I have a definition of something, but then it doesn't actually appear. So yeah, I would go in and add it to all the use charts.
Liz, you have anything?
Uh, not really. Looking over it, it makes sense to me. I, I concur and don't have too many questions on it.
I have a question that may or may not be related, not 100%. My recollection from our last application was that one of the significant items of concern about these service stations in the downtown area was the 24 hour convenience store. But this doesn't address that at all. Like we're 100% just talking about fuel. And we're not going to be addressing that other larger concern.
I think a lot of the concerns that people had with our use were when somebody drives up, the lights under the canopy are going to turn on. It's going to be a, and then there's people out at night making noise. I think a lot of those issues are, they're not necessarily gone with, out the fuel islands, but they're.
So. Right. But I guess what I'm wondering is if you, so we're not, we're not really regulating as much the convenience store portion, and I understand why with the small business and the local ownership. But that doesn't keeps, keep someone from saying, well, we're just going to keep our six things and we're going to expand our convenience store portion and now make it 24 hours. Sort of still end up with those same types of issues with just fewer fuel pump, fuel pumps in that same scenario.
So to expand, they would still, I mean, considering that all of ours at this time don't have a conditional use permit, they would still have to get a conditional use permit.
So we could still address those types of things.
Like a limitation on hours.
Hours.
Okay.
Through the CUP process is a really good way of adding additional conditions.
Okay, that answers the question.
It closes at 11 or 10 or whatever.
That answers my question. I, it seems like I had one other question. Now I can't think what it was. Um, maybe it was just to clarify that this map, the existing conditions map that we have, this is this is our, what, this is our current zoning or this is our current?
That is how we currently. They're prohibited, CBD permitted, industrial, conditional, explicitly conditional on community commercial and then not listed in the residential use chart. So default.
So I have curiosity, what does our future land use? Do we have areas sort of stated as, hey, here's a potential service station location in our future land use map?
The Lardo sub area plan identifies a location for a potential service station.
And is it in the scenic route?
Yeah. And now I think that.
Well, parts of it.
Yeah, that.
Part of it is because the Lardo plan encompasses a larger, larger area there. So I don't think all of it.
Like, like west of the actual restaurant, is it?
Circling it up on the screen.
Yeah, the location that they identified was.
But that's no longer part of the scenic route like it used to be.
I believe it was at the corner of Dine Hard and, or Blitzen, yeah.
Yeah, there was one there, but.
Yeah.
They also had commercial on still do there with Broken Ridge Commons.
Broken Ridge Commons is further.
Yeah, but that was still part of the Lardo.
West area.
Was that the West Valley?
It was the same in planning dock.
Yeah, but okay, that was part of the West Valley instead of the Lardo part of it. Okay.
Yeah. And that, I mean, that plan came in, in 2005. So that, there's been two comp plans since then. And we're looking to update the comp plan next year. So I think like with the discussions with the county, like understanding what's going to happen with the impact area and some different land uses, we're likely to have some changes on our future land use plan map. I think over time, what we've done is we've taken those little area plans and we've inserted them into our future land use plan to give people kind of conceptual ideas of ideas for land use and conceptual site plans and things like that. But I think they're intended to be conceptual.
Okay.
So I think, I think we're okay on that.
So, right, because anything in code really should supersede the planning documents, right? Like, as far as like, here's a future land use plan. Oh, but our actual code says you can't do that there.
Yeah, yeah. So I think probably what we would do is, I mean, I like to think of the future land use plan as being like our last version, we fuzzed out all the parcels, right?
Kind of like.
Because people would like to go parcel by parcel and say, well, it says exactly that. And that's not really the intent. The intent is to say this general area is this. And so I think like the idea of like the old Lardo town site could potentially have a gas station, but the idea is not to have it right on the scenic route. So it would be maybe set back or
Sure.
within that area.
Okay.
Any new word from the state on the potential trade of the highway and the movement of the highway down Boyce?
I have not heard.
Dine Hard. Nothing new back from them on that?
No, I mean, there's ongoing conversations with the state about that. There's a lot of improvements that need to be done first. And so I think trying to work on some of the infrastructure pieces prior to that happening so that it's actually a more equal value needs to happen. So so I think the first step was kind of doing the study and everybody agreeing, yeah, that's a good idea. And now I think, you know, at the staff level, we've, we've been talking about some funding ideas about how to improve Third Street and West Lake Street. So maybe even on behalf of the staff or on behalf of the state to sort of bring it up so that when there is a swap, it's more of an equal swap kind of thing. Just because the condition of existing state highway is much less than Dine Hard, Blitzen.
Oh, so the state would be getting.
A smoking deal.
Right.
We would be left with a lot of issues related to stormwater, all kinds of issues, right? It's efficient on all kinds of things. So. So we're trying to kind of help with them kind of solve maybe some of those problems so that it's a more attractive swap. Especially while it's a state highway and it has more opportunities for funding.
Sure.
Government would.
Yeah. Yeah, that makes sense. Okay. Anything else? That we need to go over or you'd like to go over? Because we don't, we're not really like voting on any today, right? Or just starting talking about it?
Just discussion in any direction that you have for us so that, um, our goal is to bring back, um, an ordinance to you guys at your January meeting. So if you have any specific ideas that you want us to roll into that language, we're trying to keep it as simple as possible.
Just like to make sure the, you know, basic protections for the ones that are currently there.
Yeah, kind of the existing conditions, addressing that and but try to keep it relatively simple terms of a code amendment.
So you're seeing that there was a possibility of a, of a fuel station in the Lardo area or? There was an application. Was it? Okay. I, I don't know if it ever actually made it to the application status, but there was conversation about it several years ago. Never materialized.
Yeah, it was on the corner of Boyce and 55. It didn't get very far.
But then, yeah, I think it wound up getting incorporated to a future planning document. This is a likely location for a automotive oriented business or something like that was what the planning document says. Go ahead, Ron.
I'm just thinking on the setbacks for the, let's say the pumps. Is that a distance from the parking area for the pumps? The pumps, the canopy over the pumps? Or how is that going to be defined? Something to consider then.
Yeah.
Because they're going to need to know a distance from something.
As far as being within the 150 foot.
Yeah. So what point does that? 10 feet from the pump or if there's a canopy or?
I think the edge of canopy. Yeah.
Like when we talk about the setbacks, it's the nearest point of the building element. So I guess that would be the top of the canopy, taking out.
But if they didn't do, well, I can't imagine anybody not doing a canopy up here. So, yeah, they'd almost have to do a canopy.
I think.
Otherwise they'd be foolish. Oh, yeah, okay. Which we've seen a few. Close. And is there going to be, I guess, definitions you were going to have, like, is there going to be any maximum pump numbers or anything like that or?
Um, or.
The service station, if somebody.
Oh.
I mean, are we going to try to go more than X amount of pumps?
We weren't thinking about getting that perspective.
Yeah.
If it fits and gets approved kind of thing. So they're not really.
Yeah, and it's less visible. I mean, I think that, so the original idea behind this, the original code amendment was like, when you go to a lot of other mountain towns and catch a great example, you're like, where's the gas stations? They're not on the main street because it's usually not a huge draw. And so we were trying to sort of align ourselves more in that sense of that the gas stations aren't necessarily on your main street and also trying to prep for this idea. If we do the swap with the state highway, right, essentially Third Street and Lake Street become kind of local main streets as opposed to state highway. And so just trying to like eventually like the existing uses are allowed to remain, but not necessarily encourage them or encourage more to be added to the, to these areas. So I mean, that was the original intent, like when we brought in 2020.
I think.
And then we got a gas station.
Yeah, that's poor timing.
But we were thinking about it. We were thinking.
Um, I think for me, the large, large scale, well, I understand it is more of a parking facility as opposed to gas station. I, my own preference would be that that also not be allowed within, I just can't envision parking lot being a great use of our scenic route land. The smaller scale where it's in front of a business, that's a different scenario, but.
About electric vehicles?
Yeah, just as they're creating definitions and looking at those. I guess my input is my preference would not to have a, not to have a big parking lot full of.
A standalone parking lot, you mean?
Yeah, like a charging.
Large scale.
It'll charge, vehicle charging facility that is more like a parking lot. To me, I would rather see that walk off the scenic route as opposed to, and still well within walking distance of downtown, but as opposed to like, oh, here's.
Yeah.
If it's a large scale, to me that is maybe it's not.
So maybe we could add something like, um, like under the definition of, um, charging station, we could say like, you know, parking only or parking.
Not accessory to a.
Yeah, not accessory to a, to a building. With the idea that if there is a large scale one, there would have to be some sort of associated building or in front of it. So it would still need to be on the side and behind.
So I guess I just would, yeah, like I guess.
Fuel pumps in the 150 feet back.
Like.
Would either one
Following.
Scale or fuel pump have to be past the setback of a, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, to me, if it's a large scale, like this is our business is fueling these, these electric vehicles. Then to me, I mean, I get that it's longer term parking, but it's still just a row of cars sitting there.
Right.
So to me, it, and again, large scale and not small scale, to me, it should almost be required to meet the same as the gasoline, as a fuel station with gasoline, the same types of requirements.
So it wouldn't be a place where you'd have a charging station, a bunch of charging stations, then you have some kind of facility that like people could go to?
I mean, that'd be a gas station basically, except for her longer term.
Just be, both of them would require the pumps or charging units still to be 150 feet back from the road either way.
Okay.
On a large scale. So either any gas station or a large scale charging station would still have to go by the same setbacks within the scenic routes. Which I think makes sense because you're right, it's going to be a bunch of cars sitting there.
And I'm thinking like way future. I mean, obviously now we're not going to have this huge vehicle charging facility because we don't have.
The closest one, Boyce here, does Lewiston have? I guess Lewiston probably.
Shore Lodge has a couple.
Western. If you drive past the Best Western in the middle of the night, there's some purple glowing object. They did not need it. So I don't think that they're public, but they're there.
Well, Shore Lodge too.
I'm going to figure Shore Lodge probably would have one.
Yeah. We have an application with May Harvard that is ready for approval as soon as it pays its fees.
But someday eventually maybe.
Although it's 150 feet, does he fit?
Yeah, I think there's a way for us to probably craft the ordinance or the code so that it's, it's really more about like the form. So it's the same thing. And then the actual specific use we can address because like you said, we're probably not going to see a ton of large scale. At least initially. And then if we get to that point, we can kind of decide what we want that form to look like and how we want them to look. And we maybe at that point create more specific development standards for them. I think at this point it was more of just adding the use to the table. And, but I think like if we match the same form, that makes sense. At the end result, if it's like you said, gasoline or electric, it's still the same.
It's still, right, you're still.
It's still a parking lot.
It's still.
Yeah.
With a convenience store.
Yeah.
All right, any?
Can you make sure that anything on EVs for like large scale or small scale comes back with information from our Idaho Power person about opportunity areas on the grid that we have. They'll probably be tied to like phase three power. If not, not a lot of that in town.
That makes sense.
Is this even located in a place where this is possible?
Okay.
Yeah. Would that be one thing on your forms like we have on the other ones that are required to go talk to?
Could do that.
You know, sewer district and all that, we can, if, if they're doing an EV of any kind, they're required to get a sign off from Idaho Power before they come to us.
Oh, no.
And I think that'd be a good idea because that could eliminate any time we have to spend if they say, no, it's not there unless you want to drop.
Not even going to work.
Your 400 grand just so we can extend it.
Yeah. Cool. I like that.
Anything from Morgan on the high tech stuff?
Just listening to the conversation.
I think that's been some good, good conversation, good discussion. Anything else? We can move on.
That's great. That's super helpful. Thank you.
Let's see at the January meeting, that sounds even more familiar. Okay. All right.
That's why we're trying to keep it simple. Complete and easy.
And they will move on to other signs. Any signs?
So we have now a tenant and the building that now has the pretty remixed signs up. The pet spa is moved right back in and they have some window decals. No, they are not blacking out the window. That's just a background to try and match the window. That is actually not red and I don't know how the PDF maker decided to paint this red, but it's actually a pale blue in the background with like a pom. So I've never seen this sign before in my life. I've seen blue the last time I looked at it.
It printed normal?
Yeah. And that bracket is fine.
So mine looks weird. This is fine. But in your printed packet, it looks the way that it looks in real life. It doesn't have any lighting. It's flat. It doesn't hang over anybody's head and smack them in the face when they walk by. Signage. Has a little extra to spare if they need to put any of the. And then the other one is the new tenant slash owners of the Old Blue Moose, may it rest in peace, is a disaster response business. We rented early on to ensure. We rented early on to make sure it was not going to conflict with the formula business rule. Turns out we have local disaster response contractors that also happen to build houses too. So we're like, well, all these business licenses meet all the formula business rules. So they're okay. They are a formula business. They constitute less than 10% of like businesses. And then their sign, they started out with a bright green, like the truck you may or may not have seen parked right at. And I said, please, no, that's neon, that's day glow. We're going to have a hard time. So they went with the classic off white, but looks like white and feels like white, but it's not quite white. Light, 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 light gray in the background. And it's much less terrifying when I go drive down that side of town. It's up and it meets code and they replaced it so it doesn't require a feeding sensor. And then it is the season of sidewalks being plowed and being continually blocked by sandwich boards. So Crystal, the code enforcement officer and I are chasing a few various new owners of sandwich boards and circles. And I've encouraged business owners to write letters to city council regarding how they feel about temporary and portable signage. And if they wish to have that changed, to use their civic opportunities to. We've received zero letters in the two months that I've been making this recommendation. So at this time, I do not foresee a portable sign quest, but things could change. And perhaps we will look at it. Who knows? That's all I have in the package. And then you just have a copy. Liz, I forgot to email you this, but we can email it to for the 2023. Updated that January 10th date. Consider New Year's holiday. July, this year doesn't. To run through. And if you identify any holidays that we can. The correct quarter.
What about all those trucks around with the electrical and plumbing trucks that are sitting alongside the highway? It'd be fantastic.
Over there at the Frackrest Plaza. They've been good.
Been pretty tough on them, so.
Unlike those electric vehicles in town. Those ones, we need to send them another letter. It's been a while since they didn't answer the last letter, so.
They moved the van for.
Yeah, I noticed it.
Yeah, I did notice that.
Yeah, noticed that.
We'll see what we can get done with them.
So the one I see in July, we are bumping that to the second Tuesday.
Yep, so January, July, September.
I think September for Labor Day.
Labor Day, I can't remember what day it is.
Oh, the fourth, okay, yes, moving. All right, well, with that.
Right. We're through a little bit before. But yeah, so next month. Like I mentioned, it's going to be a full one. One for you up already. And yeah, some mysteries, subdivision, middle school expansion, storage expansion. A likely probable appeal relating to building height of a under construction building. Camp Pinewood is building a bunk house. And the tiny house proposal at 501st Street.
It's a lot.
It's a lot.
Oh, plan for a extended meeting, I would say at this point. Anybody here have any conflicts on that? I plan on being here. Liz, it do, it look like it'd be on your schedule all right?
Yeah, it looks, works for me.
Sounds like we need to make sure we get a forum here just as the amount of stuff on that would be a bummer to have to. If you could reach out to the others and. Say, is there a need of being here? We can discuss more with Austin as well.
I think we should try to do YouTube videos and do the same thing. We were gone last. Yeah, margaritas.
Oh, yes, I did read, I did read the minutes really thoroughly. But I will, for the stuff that's coming up that was on the last one, I will review the videos. Yeah.
Do you want to?
A margarita for that too.
Do you want to update them to the impact area? Just.
Yeah. Valley County P and Z has their formal documents up for adoption on the eighth of their recommendation on what's going on with the area of impact. Generally, they were in favor of keeping our ordinances and comprehensive plan in effect in the area of impact. They had some adjustments to the boundary. The most substantial one was Kron to the airport, basically taking that corner of the area of impact out. Making this part of the rate of incorporated county, then a couple of minor adjustments.
Where would that show on the?
What?
So it's going Kron to Elo would be no longer in the impact?
Yeah, basically.
How deep we can go.
On the east side of the highway then, right?
Yeah, both sides of the highway they were.
And then everything south of the airport.
Yeah.
South airport, so that would all.
All go back to.
Be a concerned airport manager.
Yeah. So how is that going to play into our January meeting?
So.
Nothing is changing until something changes.
Yeah.
So we got to continue as normal until.
The informal kind of beginning of it.
Okay, so it's not something they're voting on that's all of a sudden going to come right after our meeting and change? Okay, okay.
No, and then.
You might as well review it.
January 19th, the county commissioners and city council are going to have kind of a high level informal meeting about this process and hopefully define topic areas, timelines, process, like what they want to just sort of like work out and negotiate before they enter into the formal process. I mean, at the point at which somebody says we want to formally start the process, then it's very rigid and you're following the state statute. And it's not necessarily like a fantastic process to getting along and getting things done. So, so there's, if some of that work can be done upfront in the informal process, it really helps the formal process. And as you know, there's a lot of cities and counties and lawsuits over these issues. We don't want to go there really. So that's kind of why we're going to start at sort of the elected official level and then get some direction from them. And then it'll probably come back to you guys. I guess some general direction first.
Sounds good. Anything else? Right, completes the meeting and open for a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion a second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nobody vote. You're adjourned.
The holidays.
Yeah.
See you next year.
Had to bring the other one. We would have been a record.